Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on April 8th, 2019. Please join Vice Mayor Campbell in a pledge allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we ask that you bless all of those that are present. We ask that you bless this council as we deliberate and make decisions that will affect our residents. We pray, Lord, that you will surround our first responders, fire, police, with your care and your blessings to keep them safe. We ask especially a blessing for our military serving here and around the world. Bless them and their families and keep them safe. We ask these things in thy most holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that prayer. We have two communication items tonight, so we're going to start with 4.1. The first item is a proclamation recognizing May as Water Safety Month and an update on the upcoming events held at the YMCA pool. And I will, before we do this, though, just so they know I'm going to say it, and they won't say, "Mayor, you need to be down there." You're going to give the presentation. All right, and so we have David Side, YMCA, and YMCA Executive Director Paul McKinn. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As you are aware, the City of Goodyear partners with the Abafria Unified School District and the Southwest Valley of the Sun YMCA to maintain and operate the joint-use pool located at the Y. This partnership agreement allows each organization to stretch their resources and ultimately provides increased aquatic opportunities for everyone in the community. It's my pleasure to introduce District Executive Director Paul McKinn, who will share activities planned at the YMCA pool in observance of Water Safety Month this coming May.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, Council. This is an awesome opportunity for us to come here tonight and talk about some of the things the Y does. So I brought with me Lance Thornton, our Associate Executive Director from the Southwest Valley Y here, who really will be hands-on with making sure that our safety-around-water lessons happen. So tonight, we're talking about building strong swimmers and confident kids. So in the history of the YMCA, we invented group swim lessons over 100 years ago. We've had over 125 years of commitment and service to the Phoenix area. Our challenge is right there. It's pools, and unguarded pools, and ungated pools, and children around pools who haven't learned to swim. So how big is this problem? Well, you can see three children die each day as a result of drowning. So 88% of children who drowned were under some form of supervision. These are scary statistics. In Arizona, in the Phoenix area here, you can see it's the... Drowning is the leading cause of accidental death in children under the age of five. And over the past three years, we've had enough deaths to fill up three classrooms. Our cause here is saving lives, raising awareness around the preventable tragedy, engaging the families on how to be safe around water. And we're going to talk about the pledge here in a minute and making sure that we're all water watchers, which we're wearing our name tags here with the Water Watcher pledge on it. And we're going to teach children and adults how to swim, because way too many adults also die from drowning. So we're going to announce on May 1st the commitment that the Valley of the Sun YMCA is making this year to 2,000 free swim lessons throughout the valley. So that's pretty amazing. Those dates will be May 13th through May 23rd. So at the Southwest Valley YMCA, we'll be doing 150 free swim lessons. Registration will open May 1st at 12:00 p.m. And if you don't get in the free swim lessons, we do do financial assistance on the swim lessons we do year-round and all the other programming as well. So we don't want to turn anyone away from the opportunity to learn to save a life. So again, May 13th, non-swimmers ages six months to adults. All of our YMCA's, it's water safety awareness and education in swimming skills. And we're working with partnership tools and resources to provide information for parents on deck, and it's free to everyone in the community. So this is just the basic kind of skills that we try and teach during this time. Swim, float, swim, and jump, push, turn, grab. The scary part is that most drownings happen within 10 feet of safety. So we're trying to really help people understand how to get to the edge and how to get out. So I mentioned our name tags here are our placards. These are the water watchers, and we encourage these to be all around the valley. Lots of backyard pools, lots of grandparents with pools, and et cetera, et cetera, pool parties. And on the back of it is a pledge. It says, "I pledge to be a water watcher, to keep kids safe in and around water. I agree to actively watch all children, keep my eyes on the water, avoid distractions, and emergency pull all children out of the water, call 911 and begin CPR." So I actually brought additional tags. If you guys would be interested, I'd love to get these in your hands tonight. And you can all be water watchers and make this commitment. So join us. This announcement will take place on May 1st at the Chris Town YMCA. Lots of news coverage, it's a press conference, and we appreciate you guys' commitment to making this Safety Around Water Month.
Well, thank you. I have to come down to read your proclamations, so why don't you just come up here and drop off one to all of them, and I'll be walking down.
Thank you very much. I have a question real quick. When you go to register, the 1st of May in Goodyear, do we just go to our local YMCA on Litchfield Road? Very good. Thank you. All right, we have them on. So we're water watchers.
Well, first of all, thank you. I was a swimming instructor for years, also water safety. And you're so right. It's so easy to be safe. But the difficult part is they have to bring the students to the pool. And I had our youngest daughter swimming at six months. So that course is a great course with certain individuals. Certainly, some babies don't like it that well, so anyway. So I look forward to reading this for you. So the Safety Around Water Month, May 2019. Whereas the Valley of the Sun YMCA designates the month of May 2019 as the Safety Around Water Month by providing 2,000 residents with an entire session of free swim lessons to focus on drowning and prevention. And whereas drowning is the top cause of injury-related deaths for our Arizona children, you gave us those numbers. Staggering. Whereas about 10% of the children who survive a drowning, well, they will suffer a lifelong disability. Whereas rising awareness will increase the understanding and education of effective ways to prevent drowning. Now therefore be resolved that I, Georgia Lord, Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim May 2019 as Safety Around the Water Month. And I urge citizens of Goodyear to support the awareness and promote safety for individuals of all ages participating in water-related activities in our community, given under my hand in these free United States and the City of Goodyear on the 8th day of April 2019, to which I have caused the seal of the City of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations. This is your proclamation. Thank you so much. The next item is a proclamation recognizing April as a Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And Mariah, right, Mariah Moon, will accept the proclamation on behalf of the New Life Center. Welcome. It's nice to see you again. Thank you for all that you do. Whereas today, the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2019. Whereas April is re-recognized nationally as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And the City of Goodyear wants to demonstrate its support in ending sexual assault and support the numerous victims who are among us. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an opportunity to educate the public on serious sexual assault and prevalence of this epidemic in our lives. Whereas sexual assault, it's defined as a sexual contact or behavior that occurs without the explicit consent of the victim. And whereas everyone has the right to live free from sexual assault. Statistics reveal that 1 in 3 women and 1 in 6 men will experience unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime. 1 in 4 girls and 1 in 6 boys will be sexually assaulted by the age of 18. Whereas every 98 seconds, an American is sexually assaulted. 8 out of 10 assaults are committed by someone who is known by the victim. Whereas preventing sexual assault is a community responsibility, absolutely. Finding solutions depends on involvement among people throughout the community, including the city officials, citizens, schools, and churches. Whereas citizens should become aware of how they can prevent sexual assault by building communities where individuals flourish in a safe and nurturing environment. Now therefore be resolved that I, Georgia Lord, Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I urge the citizens of Goodyear to work together to eliminate sexual assaults in our community, given under my hand in these free United States and the City of Goodyear on the 1st day of April 2019, to which I have caused the seal of the Goodyear to be fixed and have made this proclamation public. So glad you're here tonight, and why don't you say a few words?
Thank you, everyone. So as of December of 2018, New Life Center became a dual-status service provider, serving victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Our goal for the next year is to do strategic community assessments so that we can appropriately fill the gap in the West Valley and Maricopa beyond when responding to victims of sexual assault and their families. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any...
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? Oh, we do have someone. Please come forward, state your name, and just let me explain to you why you're coming forth. We may take any one of the following. One, respond to criticism. Two, request the staff investigate and report on the matter. Request the matter be scheduled on the future agenda. You have three minutes to speak. The yellow light will let you know you have 20 minutes left. Before you speak, just identify yourself, please, for the record.
My name is Eric Prelog.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
None of you got the call. None of you got the call that Amy Eckert's mom got the day she was hit by a distracted driver and lost her unborn baby. Mayor Lord, council members, I don't know if it's within your power to regulate distracted driving in Goodyear. I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the whole law. But I do see the chiefs of police on fire here, and I see council members, all of whom are interested in safeguarding our safety. I live down in Estrella. I ride a motorcycle to work every day. I can't tell you how many times I see people looking up, looking down. Sometimes they look down for a long time, and it really scares me. You see them weaving right to left in their lane, sometimes out of their lane. Council members, Mayor Lord, please do whatever you can. If it's petitioning the state for more stringent penalties or for tighter laws around distracted driving, if it's making laws right here in Goodyear, I don't know if you can make those kinds of laws here. If you can, please, please look at it in some upcoming meetings that you have. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming forth, and that is a very, very delicate subject, and thank you for bringing it forth.
Thank you.
The next is the... And we will get back to him, right? We have his name about what future?
We don't have any contact information.
I'll set. I'm sorry, didn't want to miss that. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. Will the city clerks please read consent agendas items 6.1 through 6.4 by title only?
6.1, approval of minutes. 6.2, recommend approval of a new Series 12 liquor license with growler privileges from a Kyo restaurant. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2019-1951 promoting fair housing and recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2019-1954 adopting written continuing disclosure compliance procedures and issuance and post-issuance tax compliance procedures relating to tax exempt bonds and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anybody in the audience like to speak? Then can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Stiff and a second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we're down to business. I'm reminding council to wait till a motion and a second before discussion. So we're at 7.1, and it's a request to adopt resolution 2019-1952, authorizing the sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2019. Finance manager Gerald Ekerson to present. Jared?
Good evening, Mayor Lord, members of the council. The item we have in front of us right now is to authorize the refunding of the 2009 Series General Obligation Bonds. This will allow us to take advantage with some more advantageous interest rates that we have out there right now. We're looking at an estimated present value savings of about $1 million, which is an 18% reduction of the debt service for the 2009 Series General Obligation Bond. The maximum maturity of the new bonds will be equal to the current 2009 bonds, which will be July of 2029. These bonds, while they're general obligation bonds, they're backed by secondary property tax. These bonds are actually paid for with water and wastewater revenues. Are there any questions on this?
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Would the city clerk please read resolution 2019-1952 by title only, please?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1952, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Goodyear, Arizona, General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2019, delegating the authority to approve certain matters with respect to the bonds and the bonds being refunded, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, appointing a registrar and paying agent, and a depository trustee for the bonds, approving the form of certain documents and authorizing completion, execution, and delivery thereof, delegating the authority to approve and deem finally form of official statement, ratifying all actions taken and to be taken with respect to the bonds and furtherance of this resolution and authorizing any necessary budget transfers related to the bonds.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to adopt resolution 2019-1952? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Keno, a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
Just a gentleman, I believe I heard it, but you're not extending the length of the term of the original bond, correct?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, that's correct. It's going to remain at July of 2029.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton? Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much here. 7.2 is a request to adopt the resolution 2019-1953, authorizing the sale of the General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2019. Jared is again to present.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. This item here is authorizing the issue of new 2019 Series Bonds in the amount of $27 million. These bonds will pay for the construction of the Recreation and Aquatic Center, the replacement of Fire Station 181, and the police radio system simulcast site portion of that project as well. There's a 20-year term on these bonds. They will have a maximum maturity date of July of 2039. And the timing of the debt service payments were planned to keep the total property tax rate below the $1.74, which was the adopted council policy for the maximum rate allowable. With that, are there any questions?
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Will the city clerk please read resolution 2019-Fit 1953 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1953, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Goodyear, Arizona, General Obligation Bonds, Series 2019, delegating the authority to approve certain matters with respect to the bonds, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, appointing a registrar and paying agent for the bonds, approving the form of certain documents and authorizing completion, execution, and delivery thereof, delegating the authority to approve and deem final a form of official statement, ratifying all actions taken and to be taken with respect to the bonds and furtherance of this resolution and authorizing any necessary budget transfers related to the bonds and the projects financed thereby.
Thank you. Is there a motion a second to adopt resolution 2019-1953? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell, a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Hampton?
I believe I need to excuse myself from the previous vote and this certain...
Will you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, I think I need to excuse myself from the previous vote and this vote because of my day job as well, so...
All right. And have you run that through the lawyer?
You have a direct pecuniary interest in the action item. We can take it offline for a minute if you want to discuss it.
Yeah, we can do that real quick.
Maybe we take a five-minute recess?
Did you say yes or no? He does.
A five-minute recess, Mayor.
All right, I didn't hear that. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. So we're... Could I have it quiet in the audience? Any other discussion? Councilmember Pizzillo?
Just curious, amortization schedule for these bonds, are they going to be pretty much straight all the way through? Are you going to front-load or back-load of them? Only reason why I ask is I always think of a 30-year fix. I like things kind of level. And how are you going to set these up?
So, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, we actually are trying to level-set all of our debt across the entire general obligation load. So we're more looking at that $1.74 to make sure that we stay below the $1.74. We also are looking at potential bonds that we might have in the future, trying to plan for those as well. So it's not a completely level-set bond in this case. The refunding bond that we just spoke of, the payments, the principal payments look very similar to what the old 2009 bonds looked like. This series will kind of fit into some spots where we had some availability of some capacity.
No, I understand the $1.74. I guess my concern is that, you know, down the road, if you backload it too much, it's going to be more difficult for you to sell the bonds because you're going to be harder pressed against the $1.74. That's all I'm asking is try the best to try to streamline that. You know, I'm a firm believer that try to keep everything kind of equal so you know what that debt service is kind of going forward. In the past, we've had a tendency to try to backload a lot of things to make it cheap upfront. And for my own personal, to me, that's not the way to kind of go with debt service. So I would appreciate anything to try to keep that as level as possible when you're working on those. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, just want to follow up with Councilmember Hampton. We did go off the record for a couple of minutes and reviewed his recusal. His recusal was based upon his employment in the financial services industry, but we reviewed this bond issuance, and this company is not involved at this time. So there is, he brought it up as an abundance of caution in the future, but given the current status of his company and his employment and not being involved in this issuance, he doesn't need to recuse himself this evening.
We appreciate that clarification. All right, so in that case, no other questions? Let's roll call.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. We're at 7.3, a request to approve the letter of intent for the Goodyear Civic Square Estrella Falls Project and approve the budget transfer in the amount of $250,000. And I have, we have our city manager, Julie Arundel, making our presentation tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm back this evening to continue our conversation that we started on March 25th about the Goodyear Civic Square Estrella Falls Project. But first, I'd like to acknowledge a couple of guests we have with us this evening. Mike Olson, if you mind just standing for a second. He's the Chief Financial Officer, Treasurer, and Corporate Secretary for Globe. And I also want to acknowledge Ed Bull, who's been working with us on this project as well, who's in the audience, so thank you. So to continue our discussion from March 25th, we had talked about three project themes for this upcoming City Hall project. The first was to create dedicated space designed for consolidated public services. The second was to create a gathering place for public events to truly identify and embrace the heart of our community, to activate for public... the, and embrace the heart of our community, to activate for public and civic uses. And then the third was to create economic vitality through mixed-use development, and this would be your restaurants, retail, office, and high-density residential. This would be accomplished through a public-private partnership with the Globe Corporation. And as we discussed, the Globe Corporation is a family-owned organization. They have owned 47 acres on McDowell, and I'll show a map again, on McDowell and Montevista since the 1970s, as Mr. Getz shared with us at the last meeting. The first phase of this project would embrace a city hall with a library, a two-acre park, again, for civic activities and events, and it would add a Class A speculative office building, which brings a high-end office project to Goodyear that simply does not exist right now. So just to share again some of the maps that we reviewed. Oops, I don't know what I did. There we go. I undid it. I thought that was a pointer. There might not be a pointer on this one. So if you look to the south of the map, you can see McDowell Road. On the far north of the map is Montevista. Down the left-hand side of the project is the Bullard Wash, and to the east is 150th Avenue, and also the Harkins is identified over there. So this, this site would be, I mean, I'm sorry, our project that we're discussing tonight and which would be encompassed by the letter of intent would be within the red dotted area you see to the center of the project. However, the remainder of the site could support mixed uses such as, but not limited to, the restaurant, retail, office, general commercial, and high-density residential. We truly believe with our Globe partner that the public investment and the private investment within that red dotted area will begin to activate this entire site. So to focus now on the red dotted area, this is the project we've been calling Goodyear Civic Square at Estrella Falls. The first phase, again, would include a five-story stately city hall building to the far left, thinking about 125,000 square feet. You can see directly in front of the city hall building, it would be a two-acre park to create the square, and the square could again be activated for arts festivals and parades and food trucks and all sorts of different public events. And to the north would be the first phase of the spec A office envisioned to be a three-story, 100,000-square-foot Class A building. And so again, to kind of paint the picture, we talked about the city hall having a library, and the library has 140,000 visitors annually. The city hall project itself would have, let's say, 500 employees and another 500 employees that would occupy eventually that Class A office building. So you can see how we've now created the place and that daytime density where all those other mixed uses that our residents want to see could exist. I've included this drawing again, or this picture again, because it really brings to life the vision that we're trying to create for this project. This was a conceptual inspiration for us. This is an actual place, South Lake Town Square in the city of South Lake, Texas, and you can see it's very similar in its setup, where it has a stately city hall building towards the end of the two-acre park, surrounded by mixed use. One of the things I did is I had Googled this community, and they only have about 31,000 residents, so I do think they all came out for this event. So glad to see that square was full. So here tonight, we are to, looking to see about council's approval of the letter of intent, which would be the first official step in this public-private partnership with the Globe Corporation. It would signal the intention of both parties to pursue the project and inform the community and neighborhood, other projects, that we are serious in looking forward to the fruition of this project. But it also notifies the market that Class A office would be coming to Goodyear. And then finally, with the budget transfer, it would also allow the city to begin working on the programming phase of this project. So just to highlight a couple of items from the letter of intent, Globe Corporation would donate six to seven acres of land to the city. This would be to construct the city hall, the two-acre park, and the associated parking. The Goodyear Civic Square Project would be funded by the city of Goodyear, and we had talked about our available funding sources, including some previously voter-approved bonds. The Globe Corporation would construct 100,000-square-foot Class A office building concurrently with the project, with the city's project. The city would ultimately maintain the civic square improvements, and the roads would be dedicated to the city as public streets. So upon both parties' signature on the letter of intent, the city would begin our programming phase, and we would then be working to negotiate the development agreement, all of the details that would go into the partnership with the Globe Corporation. We would also simultaneously be working to pursue the planned area development for the totality of the parcel, the entire 47 acres and perhaps even a little more. It is our intent, if the project continues to move along the way that it has, that we could have the development agreement and the planned area development back for council consideration before your summer break. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Would you announce them, please?
Joanne Osborne.
So Representative Joanne Osborne is coming before. You have the microphone.
Thank you. For the record, Joanne Osborne, owner, Osborn Jewelers, 15350 West McDowell Road here in Goodyear. Thank you, Mayor and council. I kind of was sitting there thinking, well, is this a little premature to come speak to you so soon? But I really don't think so. And especially if it's going to be possibly in front of you before you leave for summer break, I know this isn't too early. But first of all, I come to you as a business owner. And, and when the map was up, I could see my little triangle of Osborn Jewelers sitting right next to this area. There was a time that my store was across the street from city hall. So maybe you'll be coming back to the neighborhood and being across the street from me again. But I have to say, in the many, many years that we have located in Goodyear since 1996, when we built our store, there were many places that we could choose from. But I knew, and my husband knew, that Goodyear was a place of quality, was business-friendly, was a place of community, and a place that regardless of what happens in the retail market, we were in a very viable area. And, and we chose to be where we are. Going forward, retailers, as you know, have struggled. In the last, since 2015, over 30,000 retailers have closed their stores. This year already is expected to have another 5,000. It's very difficult to be a brick-and-mortar business. You need to have energy, synergy, lifeblood coming to your areas to make those stores viable, restaurants, and community wanting to come. And so I think that what's being presented in front of you gives that viability. Now, as one of your former teammates on the city council, we know how long we've looked for this, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but you're there. You're finally at, and another point in our time that maybe there's a possibility, and I certainly thank Globe Corporation for being thoughtful and creative. And you guys are going to be looking at ways to make this happen, hopefully this time in Goodyear. And sometimes it is that, that public-private partnership that makes things finally come to fruition. So I'm excited about that. I know that you will make good financial decisions. But lastly, I come as a citizen. A citizen's, like I said, since 96, that has waited a very long time for a city hall that she wants to be proud of, that, not that we're not proud now, because wherever Goodyear sits, that's where our lifeblood is. But we want a place that is a gathering place for our citizens, and everybody's under one roof together, and remember quality, because that's something we've always stood for. Remember to, this isn't the Taj Mahal, we know that. But it's someplace that citizens should be very proud that they are at, so I thank you for that tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Is there a motion, a second, to approve the letter of intent? Do I hear the motion?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Stip, and I'm sorry, which one, and Councilmember Loretano for the second. All right, open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
You know, I'm going to sort of echo the Representative Osborne on this. We've been waiting for this for a long time, and, and I had this vision in my head of a gathering place, and how can we get this thing kicked off? And I really appreciate Globe stepping forward, because I, I do believe that we can get the synergy out of this place to get what we need to get done. The number of people that are going to be in that area, because we always hear, if you try to get into a restaurant on the weekends around here, you can forget it. I mean, it is busy, but the problem is, is getting that day traffic, so we can get more quality and more variety, so they can get the business during the day for lunch. And I think once this goes here, and my vision, I see that gathering place, I can see art festivals, I can see music festivals, you know, what we're having there on the lake, I can see some of that being held there right there at city hall. And that picture that you put up there, I've been looking for something for this for, as Representative Osborne mentioned, for a very, very, very long time. And I really want to see this come through, and I appreciate Globe stepping up and getting this done. Thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
And I'm going to echo that. That was one of the first committees I sat on, with the city center committee with the mayor, and, and I am so excited, although it's not the same as where it was, I think this is actually a better spot for the time. It's, I want to thank Globe for coming forward, and I want to thank the city manager and your whole staff, because I know this took a lot of work on everybody's part, because this is just wonderful. This is going to be the gathering place, it's going to have synergy, it's going to bring together the corner where Representative Osborne stores and the other stores and the restaurants, and when you have those festivals, and I know we've already talked about making sure that those part, those parcels, it kind of, the whole area blooms, that's the goal. So I am very excited, and I am very excited to have Globe as our public-private partnership, and I think it will be a wonderful area. And I am actually very excited about that Class A office space, believe it or not. I think that will add the business element, that also will help bring some of that daytime traffic. So great job, everybody.
Any other comments? All right, well, I, I will make a comment. This is why I'm on the council. 2004, I was chosen to be the city center chairman, so I spent from 2004 until this very moment wanting a city center. And the citizens also did that. We had a great success with our, our campaign to build this, and so due to the downturn in the economy, we had to postpone it. So I'm terribly pleased, and I can't thank Globe enough. It's just a great partnership. And when you first started talking about this, I just held my breath in hopes that when the staff met with you, that we would be able to work through this. And speaking of the staff, I want to thank, Julie, I want to thank you and the entire staff. So I want to clap on the staff here a minute for you. Come on. This is not easy arrangement, but it's nice because we're prepared this time. We have the bonding, we have the citizens backing, and we have the partnership. Couldn't ask for anything more, so thank you. So with that, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
They're better not be opposed. Ayes have it. All right, thank you very much. So let's go to number two. And there, is there a motion, a second, to approve the budget transfer in the amount of $250,000 from the general fund portion of the capital project reserve? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go to seven point four, a request to adopt the Resolution 2019-1955 to authorize a job creation agreement for Fairlife LLC. Economic Development Project Manager, Harry Paxton, to present. Harry?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's my privilege to be here tonight to present to you a job creation agreement for Fairlife Incorporated, or Fairlife LLC. If I could, let's see, you have the presentation? There we go. Fairlife's an international manufacturer and bottler of milk beverages headquartered in Chicago, Illinois, and they produce nutrient-rich, ultra-filtered milk that's 50% more protein and 50% less sugar than regular milk. Their first custom-designed facility from the ground up, which will be certainly a lot of innovation and technology in this facility, as they make a significant investment in, in our community, will be here in Goodyear. Give you a little bit of the backstory about Fairlife selecting Goodyear. It's been several years that we've been working with them. They shortlisted sites in Goodyear, and then we also competed with other locations in the west. Staff worked with the Arizona Commerce Authority, the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, and several private utility companies over the last several years in working with them and helping them to inch forward each year and overcome some challenges that they also face. In fact, one of the challenges was with a gas line that has to be brought, I think, by about 12 miles to the facility to provide the high-pressure natural gas, which also existed in the area, but not at the level that they needed. That also helps bolster the infrastructure that will exist in, in this business park. Fairlife purchased the property just recently, last month, March, and Fairlife anticipates and has planned for future expansions at the, at the facility. So this will be what we believe will be the first phase of a larger project over time. The location of this facility is a northwest corner of Cotton Lane and Thomas Road at the PV 303 Business Park, and the site consists of approximately 54 acres. This is a, two pictures, one of the site plan, you can see there at the northwest corner, Thomas Road, west of Cotton Lane does not exist today, and so over the frontage of their property, they'll be building that, that portion of Thomas Road. And then also you can see to, to the right there, an image of the facility as it sets back from Cotton, Cotton Lane and Thomas Road. So that gives you a good idea of the location. The agreement provisions for Fairlife will, the project will create about 140 full-time positions, paying full-time positions an annual wage of at least $40,000, and then also providing for healthcare insurance of at least 65% of that being paid by the company for the employee. This company will invest a significant amount in one of the highest capital investment projects in the PV 303 area, $200 million in capital equipment and tenant improvements in Phase One. So this agreement that's being proposed to you tonight proposes to waive 100% of all non-expedited plan review and permit fees up to a maximum of $900,000. And if expedited reviews are available, then those would also be covered. One of the things that we always do on these projects is provide you with an economic analysis, an independent third-party economic analysis, and we did that with Applied Economics. They estimate that 817 million in total economic impact over the life of this agreement over the next five years. So there will be increased property taxes and sales tax revenues generated by Fairlife as well as its employees, vendors, and service providers. The direct revenue over the next five years is estimated to be 3.4 billion. I also want to let you know that we're fortunate to have John Holzmer here tonight from, from Fairlife, the Vice President of Engineering. He is here in, in the audience if you have any questions, or if you have any questions for me, and be happy to address those. Also want to recognize Mitchell Allen, who several years ago first met with Fairlife in Chicago many years ago, and so we appreciate his, his support on this project as well with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. Representative Osborne? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Wearing that fourth hat now, as representative, I wanted to let you know that this is something that the state was also trying to get a head start on. And in my Land Agriculture Committee, we had passed a bill through the committee to look for another dairy inspector, because the state is, I guess, at its limit of dairy inspectors, and this wonderful industry and project will call for another one. And so I just thought you'd like to know that the state was also looking after this.
Thank you for that bit of information. Are there any other?
No, Mayor.
All right. Excuse me. I apologize for all this coughing, you just have to bear with it. I'm trying to find which council person gave you this, but I, I won't make any accusations. Okay. All right, thank you. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019? Is that where we're, I'm asking for a motion, all right? Yes, thank you very much. Is there a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 2019?
Actually, Mayor, I need to read it first. Sorry.
All right, go ahead. Thank you. Will the city clerk, I'll get back to it right now, forget this cough drop and the coughing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1955 by title only, please? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1955 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1955, approving, authorizing, and directing the city manager to execute a job creation agreement for Fairlife LLC, authorizing city staff to take actions consistent with terms of resolution and agreement, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1955? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Hampton. And I didn't hear who the second was, and Vice Mayor Campbell did the second. Open for council discussion? Councilman Hampton.
Saying, welcome to Goodyear. I know I'm not the first, but thank you so much for choosing Goodyear and wanting to invest in Goodyear. I think it's exciting that it's your first ground-up facility. I think that'll be pretty exciting for you and also for, I think, people in the community who want to work at a high-tech manufacturing-type facility. So thank you once again for that. I think it's a great addition to Goodyear and the things that we're trying to be and grow here in Goodyear. So yeah, I'm excited for all your new employees and for you and for all your future success. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Stiff?
When we talked about this last week, I wanted to point out, because we talked about the Civic Center. Make sure I use the right.
Civic Square.
Civic Square. Right lingo. I said that'd be a great place for Fairlife to relocate their headquarters to. So we have a great place for you, too, if you want to do that. But seriously, we're excited to have you here. We really appreciate you choosing us. We look forward to a long partnership. Thanks.
Any other comments? It's so nice to have a manufacturer with something healthy. And I think that will be very good for our city, because we are pretty close to a healthy city, so thank you. All right, then let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, that's great. All right, now is the time for council comments, commendations, reports on current events. Who'd like to go first?
I'll start.
Councilman Pizzillo?
You know, first place, the staff did an excellent job on our volunteer appreciation dinner. What was it, about a couple hundred people there, 250? It's quite a lot there. And I know they really appreciate it. I had the opportunity, because I love to work those tables when I go around and personally thank them, because you know how I am about the volunteers. I always love to note, I'll match our people up who step up at any one time and volunteer for the various services throughout the city. I mentioned, there's nobody who has a better, in my view, community than we do when it comes to that. The second thing is, Mayor, I got to say a few words on your behalf for Urban Air. And I want to tell you this, that place is a fantastic place. Had the opportunity when my grandkids were up there with my son. And in fact, we had Brandon there, working with the kids inside the cage there on the, whether it's the ninja course. They have a little bit of everything in there. And when the kids first got there, and in fact, I think Rebecca was having some trouble trying to keep track of hers as well. Said, where's the kids? I don't know, they disappeared. There's so many places to go in there, not just the trampoline. It's an all-indoor amusement. And I think it's going to be a great addition here to the city. Just a little sidebar, Mayor, he did know about my easy-to-grin, the owner. I talked to him about that, so he was very familiar with that. But anyway, again, a great week, and Glendale's moving in the right direction. Very good year, I'll get it right. And, because I said Glendale. Slip of the tongue. I used to work for them when I first came out here, so that was on my brain. So anyway, it's been one of those nights. Mayor will hit me up for that later. But anyway, it's a great, great, you got to check it out with your kids, or even kids that are my age. Go check it out. It is a great place. Thank you.
I just want to tag on the Urban Air Adventure Park was, what also made it very special was to see our police and fire and military families enjoying that soft opening. And I thought that it was very special that they had that opportunity to jump right in there. It was a lot of fun. Another thing we did this week was go to the Harley-Davidson. I know, I took it from Brandon. Groundbreaking for the Road Runner, and that's going to be a very exciting asset for Goodyear as well.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
I also attended the Employee Spring Picnic. I think that's what we called it. And that was good, to be able to see some more of the employees and be able to recognize them and let them, yeah, get out and enjoy and be able to just recognize them for all their hard work throughout the year as well. So I thought it was good. It was so good, there were two ice cream trucks there. So, and I think we kept teasing the kids at the playground across the way with all that free ice cream we were eating. But it was, but yeah, it was a great event. And I'm glad that we do things like that for our employees, so. And then, yeah, the Harley-Davidson was great as well. I thought it was, I just feel cooler already with Harley-Davidson being in Goodyear. So I thought it's a great addition to our city. And I think it'll just, I mean, bring more and more, more and more things to Goodyear as well. So thank you.
Any other ones?
Yes, Sherry?
I was pretty much with everybody else, and I just want to comment on the Urban Air. The other thing about that is they have stuff for kids of all ages and adults. So maybe we'll do a council team building. I'll do an extra treat there, you know? If you want that extra supplemental, you got to beat them at the warrior course or something. And I do want to thank, also my AMWAW meeting. And I want to thank Representative Osborne for her leadership. She was one of the voices that helped shepherd the drought contingency plan through. And that is, I believe, now at the U.S. House. So I just want to, she's sitting in the office, she's sitting down there today. I want to thank her, because she used to sit on AMWAW. And she knows how important water is to Arizona. What did she say? Waters, whiskey's for drink and waters for fighting is what she used to say. And it's so true, so thank you for your leadership.
Any other ones? I would like to mention, I went to the Artist Reception, Artist Choice Fine Art Show at the library. It was packed. So it's a good thing that we're going to build another library, which is going to be larger. And we'll have rooms, because the display was wonderful. And it was a social hour for so many people. I mean, there wasn't a seat in the house left, so great job. All right, now is the time. City manager, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This past weekend, the Goodyear Police Department's K-9 unit participated in the 17th Annual Desert Dogs Police K-9 Trials held in Scottsdale. Fifty-five teams from multiple states competed in front of about 5,000 spectators over the two-day span. We are proud to announce that the Goodyear team did exceptionally well in the competition. They won first place for top patrol agency. And I also wanted to recognize that we had three officers in their K-9s place in various competitions. So Officer Armstead and K-9 Azur received first place for top dog, second place in the building search competition, and fifth place in the narcotics search. Officer Josh White and K-9 Rudy took first place in area search competition, second place for top dog, third place in building search competition, and fifth place for obedience officer. And then Officer Jared Jordan and K-9 Vasco received fifth place in the building search competition. So big congratulations to our team. Way to represent.
Well, that's wonderful news. Congratulations, hard work by everybody. And just a super, super announcement. Well, thank you. The next meeting will be a work session on April 15th at 4:30. And then April 22nd will be a work session at 4:30 and a regular meeting at 6:00. No further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.